All right, may I have a motion that we only discuss those six items we went into closed session for? Two items under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A3, consideration of the acquisition or disposition of real property. Two items under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A8, consultation with legal counsel. One item under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1, consideration of candidates for appointments. And one item under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A6, discussion of investment. Wait, I had it. Discussion of investment of prospective funds where competition is involved.
So moved.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please, ma'am?
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Clontz?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Oops, thanks.
Ken? Okay. All right. Well, with that, we'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Dawson and the invocation by Councilman East, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please bow your heads at this time. Dear Lord, we thank you for our many blessings. We ask that you would continue to guide and keep us always. And please be with each of us this evening as we conduct the business of our town. In your name we pray. Amen.
Righty. I don't... Is there any modifications to public session? Don't think there is. Okay, so we'll move on to... I'd like to welcome the guests and visitors that are here in person and online.
Mr. Mayor, if I could use the opportunity in the introduction of guests to introduce officially to the council and to the public, our newest addition to the town staff, that is Trey Peace. Why don't you stand up, Trey, for everybody to see you? Trey's been with us just about a month. He is the Economic Development Planning Manager for the town, has hit the ground running as we try to get some homes constructed under our ARS program, and has been working with some business development opportunities here in the town. He's been taken around by a lot of us to see the town, and I will tell you from the first month's work, he's very eager to learn and a quick study. So I think he is another wonderful addition to your staff. And Trey, if you want to just maybe mention to them your background, particularly in public administration at the university.
To begin with, I'm from Wise County, Virginia, of course, southwest Virginia. I've moved to New River Valley, went to Radford, graduated, received my master's in public administration from Virginia Tech, a couple of local government certificates. Done a little work with my hometown of Big Stone Gap and with the Addings to them. I'm just grateful for you guys and the town of Pulaski, and I'm looking forward to opportunities to get to work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, well, first thing on my agenda here is a public hearing, Resolution 2022-21, donating two parcels to Alquist 3D for the first 3D-printed homes. May I get the staff report for that, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I think this is a matter that the council is very familiar with, as we have spent many months in discussions about the possibility of 3D-printed homes being done for the first time in Virginia, here in Pulaski. And we actually had a demonstration of the 3D printing back the end of April on Pierce Avenue. Your staff has cleared and graded those two parcels. They are now ready for development, and with that action, we would recommend that the council go ahead and make the decision to donate those properties to Alquist 3D. And my understanding is that they are chomping at the bit to start construction, but obviously we need to clear the matter of deed and transfer of the property before that can happen. But I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have. Their plan is to build two homes. One will be for purchase, the other will serve as a model home. And I would just also mention that I was approached by a neighboring town manager who indicated some interest in watching the production because they have several lots that they might want to make available for the construction of these homes. So that's one of the side benefits that we hope will come from this whole process, that many people will visit, become interested in this as an opportunity, and with the need for additional housing, not just in southwest Virginia, but elsewhere, this is a new opportunity that we think we can take advantage of and help people to understand how to make housing more affordable.
Counsel have any questions?
No, sir.
I would add that while the resolution is purely about the donation of it, it is tethered to conditions in a performance agreement that would be executed in advance of that, in a development agreement that would have terms as to what they have to do, and if they don't complete the jobs, what they're supposed to do. But this component of it is just letting us have the authorization to, in fact, do that, and those other documents have been developed in draft form, provided or enter in negotiation with them now. So just because this resolution is in fact, it doesn't mean that we necessarily transfer it. It just gives us the authorization to do so as it relates to those other documents in the development agreement.
There's no questions. I will open the public hearing. The public hearing for the Resolution 2022-21, donating two parcels to Alquist 3D for the first 3D-printed houses. Does anyone have anything to say? All right, with that, I will close the public hearing. And then I'll ask if counsel has any other questions before we move on.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-21, donation of property to Alquist 3D Printing.
Second.
And then may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Clontz?
Aye.
Me here.
Ken Reese?
That only counts as one vote.
All right. All right, then we'll move to... Next item on our agenda is Resolution 2022-22, adopting 2022-2023 general funds.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and members of council, as you know, we did hold a public hearing at your last meeting on the proposed budget for fiscal year 2023. That budget for the general fund shows an increase of a little over 4%, which is roughly half of the inflation rate that we are currently experiencing. It's a total budget of $9,433,287. I think we anticipate, now that the state appears to have approved, or is on the verge of approving a state budget, that there may need to be some modification of this budget after the 1st of July. But this is what we know today as it relates to those state funds. We have been fortunate in that the local funds that come to us have been recovering nicely, and we know that our community is being looked at for additional economic development. So we look forward to a very successful fiscal '23. I'd be happy to answer any specific questions that the council may have about budget matters.
Counsel, if you have no questions, would one make a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-22, Resolution Adopting Budget Establishing Appropriations for the Town of Pulaski General Fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, ending June 30, 2023.
Second. And may I have a roll call for that?
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Clontz?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
He had indicated to me that he had dropped off since we've been here at the city. Didn't vote, but he did clarify that that was an "aye" to the first thing on the resolution.
All righty, next on the agenda, Resolution 2022-23, the Capital Improvements Plan. May I have the staff report on that?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. The town routinely adopts a five-year capital improvement plan, which you did as well last year. While you adopt a five-year plan, you're really only appropriating funding for the first year of the five-year plan. And as I have previously indicated to the council, we are funding, fully funding, the first year for the general fund, water fund, and sewer fund from the ARPA funds. These will be used to make necessary repairs, to purchase equipment, one-time purchase items, so that we can take advantage of putting ourselves in the best position for the future. And we think that the items that are listed here are clearly ones that will avoid future expenditures and future capital years, and in future capital plans, may even allow us, as it relates to the water and sewer portions, to avoid some anticipated increases in future years if we're able to accomplish all of this. And we do have until the end of 2024 to actually complete the projects, even though they're started in this next fiscal year.
Counsel have questions? If not, then if someone would make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept Resolution 2022-23, Capital Improvement Plan. Written.
Second.
And may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Clontz?
Aye.
Resolution 2022-24, Revising Pay and Classification Plan. The report on that, please, ma'am?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, as I've indicated previously, the primary thrust of a lot of the changes in this year's budget relates to retaining our current employees and making ourselves more competitive in order to gain future employees. The employee market is very difficult right now. We've been fortunate to retain some very dedicated staff and want to continue to do so. So in this particular pay plan, we have made a bold decision to have a minimum starting salary of $15 an hour. As I understand it, that puts us in a very competitive mode, and we are providing a $2,000 annual increase to every employee who's on a 40-hour-week schedule. This results, the minimum pay, results in some changes to pay scales at the lower end of the spectrum, and the 2,000 increment gives the highest benefit to those that are at the lower pay scales. So we feel very good about this, and with the budget that you have just adopted, the funds are available to implement the pay and classification plan that you have in front of you.
All right, one of you'd like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution 2022-24, Resolution Revising Pay and Classification Plan, as written.
Second. And may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Clontz?
Aye.
Next is Ordnance 2022-05, amending Chapter 2, Section 2, 127 of Code of Ordinances. Please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. The town has charged a fee by the bank whenever our customers' residents use a credit card for payment of whatever sum might be due to the town. Because that, there is a cost to that, we have, in the previous year, instituted a, what we're calling a convenience fee, a charge to recover those costs, because we believe that it should be paid by those people using the benefit. As we have looked at what that charge should be, we have suggested this amendment, which makes the charge 2.3% of the bill, and that is the same amount that the county is implementing and has implemented as it relates to that convenient charge. So that is the change that is recommended in this particular ordinance.
And that effectively becomes a pass-through. I mean, it's just a pass-through to the thing.
Yes. Two years ago, we were eating at 100%. We kind of made a guesstimate this past year about what would give us an offset, an equal offset, and that amount was $1.75, and that really still has been insufficient. And so in talking with the county, we felt like a percent charge like theirs would be what would be best understood by the public. And of course, we'll accept cash and checks as well.
Does anyone use cash?
I still do, and people look at me like I'm crazy when I do.
I've actually had someone deny cash, a business in Virginia, which I think is illegal, but...
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
I would happily take your money anytime. If someone would like to make...
And you have.
I have. If someone would make a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt Ordnance 2022-05, amending Chapter 2 of the Code of Ordinances regarding credit card fees, convenience fees.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Clontz?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Mr. Mayor, if I could use the opportunity in the introduction of guests to introduce officially to the council and to the public, our newest addition to the town staff, that is Trey Peace. Why don't you stand up, Trey, for everybody to see you? Trey's been with us just about a month. He is the Economic Development Planning Manager for the town, has hit the ground running as we try to get some homes constructed under our ARS program, and has been working with some business development opportunities here in the town. He's been taken around by a lot of us to see the town, and I will tell you from the first month's work, he's very eager to learn and a quick study. So I think he is another wonderful addition to your staff. And Trey, if you want to just maybe mention to them your background, particularly in public administration at the university.
To begin with, I'm from Wise County, Virginia, of course, southwest Virginia. I've moved to New River Valley, went to Radford, graduated, received my master's in public administration from Virginia Tech, a couple of local government certificates. Done a little work with my hometown of Big Stone Gap and with the Addings to them. I'm just grateful for you guys and the town of Pulaski, and I'm looking forward to opportunities to get to work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, well, first thing on my agenda here is the public hearing, Resolution 2022-21, donating two parcels to Alquist 3D for the first 3D-printed houses. Does anyone have anything to say? All right, with that, I will close the public hearing. And then I'll ask if counsel has any other questions before we move on.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-23, Donation of Property to Alquist 3D Printing.
Second. And may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Clontz?
Aye.
Resolution 2022-27, Appointing Several Representatives to Boards. Go right ahead.
This is not mine. This is yours.
You don't get to do that one. Ah, man, I gotta do this one.
These are council appointments to various boards and commissions.
So it looks like we've got... What's Anthony's... How do you say it?
France.
France? To the Planning Commission, that would be, start term would be 5/17/22 through January 7/24. Joseph Goodman to the Pulaski Housing Authority from May 15, 2022, to May 15, 2026, and Terry Hell, Sr., the Pulaski Housing Authority, April 3, 2022, through April 3, 2026. If someone would like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution 2022-27, Appointing Members to Various Boards.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Clontz?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to thank you and your staff for a very, what I consider a very well-done budget, and also a conservative budget that's realistic and very detailed and itemized, and everything's where it should be. So I thank you and your staff for the hard work.
I'm looking forward to a very successful year with what work we have done in the budget preparation, as well as execution during this past and current year. I think we're on the right track.
I believe so.
There's one part of the budget that I really, I knew you took detail in it, was their employees retention, their pay, it's something that's long overdue, and we have great employees, so you've done a great job. Hope they enjoy it.
Thank you.
All righty, with that, we'll move on to the public comment period. Do I have any? I think I do. All righty, so I have two here. Who would like to go first? That's fine. Jill Love and Dan Love? Okay. And if that is... Do you want to state your name and then your address?
Yes, my name is Dan Love. I live at 220 10th Street, Pulaski. I've been a resident there for about 45 years. What I'd like to discuss with you is properties that's on Randolph Avenue that's in very bad disarray. 921 Randolph Avenue, to be exact, called the Randolph House. It is in such a situation that the building is actually falling down. Vines are taking over the building, pushing out windows, pushing off facial boards, roof, siding. It's just, it's in terrible shape. The grass is very high. The brush has grown up partially over the newer section where the doctor's offices were off of 10th Street. Bushes have literally taken over the front of those buildings and the sides, pushing out the windows. They did board up the windows at one point, but people are starting to pull them off, go back inside. There's a lot of things go on in that building at night, during the day. There's residents that walk up through there. It's very unsafe. It really needs to have a sidewalk or something put down 10th Street because it's a lot of pedestrians there. They use the parking lots for garages. They work on cars. They park their junk cars, trailers, whatever, leave them. It became a place for dope deals, and this is directly in my front door. I see it daily. People are meeting there in the afternoons for their love affairs, which happens all the time. I can call the police, they never show up, or they do an hour or so later. It's just, it's terrible. It's an eyesore. I keep my property as clean and as presentable as I possibly can, and yet I'm living across the street from a really, really mess. And I was just hoping that the new owner, from what I understand, the new owner has been purchased again. I hope he's not an absentee owner. And, you know, something really needs to be done. It is really bad shape. You know, there's animals, cats, skunks that use the buildings, and I see lights on their lot at night, and people come and park and make your deals and this and that and the other. It's just, I wanted to bring your attention, and I hope that by discussing it, something could be done to clean it up, because it really is bad, and it's just, it's bad for Randolph Avenue. Randolph Avenue is a nice neighborhood, and it's really fallen down, and it's just something needs to be done. And I hope that by me bringing it to your attention, you might do a little other research on it and see what can be done, or if anything, and just clean it up. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jill Love, I live at 1,005 Randolph Avenue, and just to reiterate what my dad has said, it's just, it's a growing problem that has gotten way out of hand. Unfortunately, starting at the Randolph House and up a little bit further, has gotten a little bit out of control, and we've talked to the mayor, and I appreciate him talking to me. Just take a look, just, you know, see what's... What I'd like to discuss with you is properties that's on Randolph Avenue that's in very bad disarray. 921 Randolph Avenue, to be exact, called the Randolph House. It is in such a situation that the building is actually falling down. Vines are taking over the building, pushing out windows, pushing off facial boards, roof, siding. It's just, it's in terrible shape. The grass is very high. The brush has grown up partially over the newer section where the doctor's offices were off the 10th Street. Bushes have literally taken over the front of those buildings and the sides, pushing out the windows. They did board up the windows at one point, but people are starting to pull them off, go back inside. There's a lot of things go on in that building at night, during the day. There's residents that walk up through there. It's very unsafe. It really needs to have a sidewalk or something put down 10th Street because it's a lot of pedestrians there. They use the parking lots for garages. They work on cars. They park their junk cars, trailers, whatever, leave them. It became a place for dope deals, and this is directly in my front door. I see it daily. People are meeting there in the afternoons for their love affairs, which happens all the time. I could call the police. They never show up, or they do an hour or so later. It's just, it's terrible. It's an eyesore. I keep my property as clean and as presentable as I possibly can, and yet I'm living across the street from a really, really mess. And I was just hoping that the new owner, from my understanding, the new owner has been purchased again. I hope he's not a absentee owner. And, you know, something really needs to be done. It is really bad shape. You know, there's animals, cats, skunks that use the buildings, and I see lights on there a lot at night, and people come and park and make your deals and this and that and the other. It's just, I wanted to bring your attention, and I hope that by discussing it, something could be done to clean it up, because it really is bad, and it's just, it's bad for Randolph Avenue. Randolph Avenue is a nice neighborhood, and it's really fallen down, and it's just something needs to be done. And I hope that by me bringing it to your attention, you might do a little other research on it and see what can be done, or if anything, and just clean it up. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jill Love? I live at 1005 Randolph Avenue, and just to reiterate what my dad has said, it's just, it's a growing problem that has gotten way out of hand. Unfortunately, starting at the Randolph House and up a little bit further, has gotten a little bit out of control, and we've talked to the mayor, and I appreciate him talking to me. Just take a look. Just, you know, see what's going on up through there. It's an eyesore, and really is. And like he said, we've lived there 45, 48 years, and we just would like to see maybe an address, just see if what can, what help we might be able to get with the nuisance and issues going on.
You know, I agree with, I agree with everything, everything you said. I've been by the property recently. It's unsightly, and that's putting it kindly. As far as the... I actually live in the area. I live more down toward Main Street, but a lot of the riffraff, it's, you know, they're attracted to that kind of environment.
There's a lot of riffs that go into the building to stay in there.
Yep.
We see a lot, you know, but he's right across from it. I'm on the corner, and we see a lot that goes on. And like he said, by the time, a lot of times if we make calls to the police, unfortunately, by the time they get there, it's, you know, they're already, the situation is already gone, or it has stopped. So, I don't know if there could be more patrolling around the area, or if... I don't know if the new owner's how soon something's going to get started with the building, but it's really, it's in bad shape, and bad things are happening.
My thought is it'll have to be a multi... An approach for many angles. It's not going to be one solution fixes all. Now, I know we've, over the years, have worked with various owners of that property and tried to get some resolution. I think one of the gentlemen lived in Florida, which created problems. So, I certainly hear what you're saying. Are you familiar with any current activity? I know that, I hadn't heard it. It recently changed hands.
It did. It's old. The town has, through its Brownfields program, which is some federal funds that are made available to us, we have done three studies of the Randolph House, Phase 1, Phase 2, and then got a $50,000, what is called VBATH grant, to do a further investigation of the environmental issues. A realtor, local realtor, was marketing that property. It did sell recently to a gentleman out of Lynchburg who is a developer. We have not heard what his plans are, but my understanding from the realtor is that he does plan to redevelop the property. The evaluation that we had done of the property was, in fact, given to what became the owner. It was material that was shown to several people who were interested in it, and the realtor told me after the fact that had the town not invested the money that we had, it would never have sold because of the conditions that are there. But there is a plan that's been laid out in these several documents that indicate to the current owner what parts of the property need to be demolished and which ones are capable of being rehabilitated. As far as the police presence, I have not heard that that was an issue before, but I think the council knows. I have a staff meeting every Wednesday morning, after every Tuesday council meeting, and I will make sure that they are made aware and do regular patrols, because we don't want the kind of conditions that you mentioned. We do, obviously, from what you're saying, need to have code enforcement also get in touch with the owner, and I will personally see that either I or our new economic development staff person makes contact with that owner to see what his plans are and make him aware of the fact that the two of you have appeared tonight and told us of your concerns.
Thank you.
Is the, is the grass currently being maintained? I know we've been pretty...
It's probably been sited, and it may be up for us to actually do the mowing. We're required under the state code to give 10 days notice before we can actually go in, and we do mow, we become a lawn mowing service for many properties once it starts growing. And Mr. Radcliffe, you cannot talk about grass. And Mr. East, I don't appreciate your bringing that up.
I know.
The grass is probably a foot taller, taller.
Yeah.
Been a month or so before, since it's been mowed.
Actually, grass has to grow to 12 inches in the town before we can site someone.
It would be that tall or taller.
Can we revisit that? Because that's a little excessive.
It's, I agree.
It's that tall or taller.
And it's lower in other communities.
I actually spoke to one of the, somebody mowing a lawn for the town, and he said by the time he gets to it, it's so high, it takes him three times to get it mowed.
It is 12 inches in your code, and I think that's highest.
So, we should revisit that.
I'm happy to bring something back to you all that would reduce that.
I would like to see something come back to us. I would, I think, as a point of conversation with the new owner, as we welcome him to town, that we could come up with a mutual agreement on how to address, first of all, the grass and keep that mowed, whether it's bringing in somebody locally to do that. It sounds like he's a potential, you know, good investor for our town, but I think if we could come up with some arrangement to take care of the low-hanging fruit, if you will. The patrols would certainly help. I don't know if there's any lighting issues out there that we can address to maybe run off some of the undesirables.
It's lighting there, but that doesn't...
The building was boarded up at one point by the town did that, and then unfortunately, people have gone over and pulled boarding off, so then they go in the back way where that, he was talking about where the parking lot was used. They're going in through the back and going all through the building. Somebody's eventually going to get hurt.
Yeah, and I...
Because there's kids that go in there, teenagers, adults.
And I would agree, that's another issue, that, because I know that we had had a discussion about boarding it up, because it was, portions of it were condemned at one point. Is that correct?
We can board, the requirement under the code is that the first floor access has to be boarded up.
Yeah, that's what. But they still pulled the boards off.
Yeah, but if they have higher, you know, second and third floors of buildings, we don't board it up, and that requirement is not there for any building. But the first floor that can be accessed is the one that, and I haven't been here long enough to know that we boarded it up previously, but if that's an issue, what I would suggest is that we talk to the new owner and advise him that, of these complaints, and that he needs to correct them rather than us.
Right. I think if we...
And then if he doesn't, then obviously we'll take the necessary steps.
Well, as we, and that's what I was driving at, if we just kind of suggest this or not suggest, just let him know what the list, this is what needs to be done, and we have a list of solutions.
I will see that he's contacted.
Until he does something with the property, it would be nice to have more detail on that. But also, as far, there may be an option there to block that parking, you know, the access.
That would, that would help 100%.
It would help, yeah.
If the owner is...
Yeah, he would have to agree to that, yes.
Agreeable to that. But that may be something we want to suggest.
That would protect its building, because it'd keep people out of there if he blocked it off, because they use it for everything.
I think there's a lot of extracurricular activity that goes on over there.
So, we, yeah, so anything, you know, anything we could suggest that's low-cost, immediate, you know, you get an immediate response from it, and then, you know, when he decides to move forward, then...
I will write out there myself.
It'll take care of the rest of it.
Thank you. It's, you know, it's just an eyesore for the neighborhood, and like he said, we try to keep things the best we can, and there's trash. I'd usually go around and pick up the trash.
Well, I've had several people in the neighborhood call wanting to know what the new owner's plans were, and unfortunately, we're unable to answer that question. Certainly, those who've called me were pleased that it had changed hands. Right. Because nothing was done with the previous owner.
Right.
And we all are very hopeful.
We are too.
And we know that it has been looked at for some redevelopment, and that's certainly what everyone's goal is, a nice, appropriate thing for your neighborhood. But I will personally go out there and speak, as I said, tomorrow morning with my staff, and you will see a difference by tomorrow evening, I can guarantee you.
We would like to see it improved, you know, improve the neighborhood. But as it is now, it's really bad.
I understand. I have read the reports on all of the investigations that have been done through the Brownfields money, so I'm familiar with what needs to be corrected, but was not aware of some of the things that you all have mentioned, but we'll take care of it.
And that's a good sign that he bought that with knowing that those, the issues exist, and he's willing to remediate those issues. So, that's a good sign from an investment standpoint.
Yes.
Because I imagine it's asbestos, and, or I don't know if he gets into that, but what, I imagine there's a number of expensive issues to resolve there.
First of which is to tear down several of the buildings that really are not rehabilitatable, and they tend to be the newer buildings as opposed to the older ones.
Oh, really? That's surprising.
They could be the prettier ones, anyway.
Yeah, they're the nicer ones, that's right.
Thank you, guys. Thank you all. Thank you for coming.
Probably full asbestos. It was built 1924, the old hospital, and the new section was built around 50 something. But anything, anything, any improvements would be gratefully appreciated. Thank you very much.
In regards to coating, there's a few other coating issues that I've talked to our wonderful mayor about. So, while you're out riding tomorrow, if you'd like to go up just Randolph a little bit more, you'll see some coating issues.
All right.
Trailers with no tags, cars in backyards with no tags, just things like that. Thank you for coming to our neighborhood and looking. Thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty. So, the next thing on the agenda is the consent agenda. Consideration is May 17th, 2022 minutes. If you all would look over and someone make a motion, please.
I move we approve May 17th, 2022 minutes, as written. Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Quance?
Aye.
And we'll move on to the council comments. Guess we'll start with Mr. Penn. Do you have any comments today?
I don't have anything. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Mr. Dawson?
The only comment I had is, and I don't believe that we've mentioned or brought up publicly about the, putting some major kudos out to Music and Merchants Festival on Main Street, Chris Connors. I know deserves a huge pat on the back for that, and Pulaski on Main's involvement. I know for everybody that had a chance to participate, as it was previously, it was a fantastic way of showcasing the town of Pulaski. It's probably the best way people could envision us, seeing that type of activity on our Main Street itself, and seeing that energy and life in our historic downtown. And so, I can't say enough about it. I thought it was fantastic, and the more that we see, the better, so.
I will pass that on to the Pulaski and Main organization.
It was definitely a good event.
That's all I have.
Mr. East?
The only thing I have, and it may be owned by the Ruhrton Club, but I was walking through Jackson Park the other day, and the flag needs to be replaced. It's frayed. But I don't know that that's a town issue. Is it the Ruhrton Club that handles? I saw a plaque at the base of the flagpole that said Ruhrton Club. So, I didn't...
I don't think so, but maybe that they put the original one in a pole up, and we may be responsible for replacing it. I honestly don't know, but I'll check.
Yeah, I mean, it's a flag. That's it. That's all I want.
Welcome back.
I was asking, oh, now I've got something for you. Okay. I want this added, get this added to our workshop when we come up on the 21st. I want the council to consider renaming a small portion of a road that lies at the sheriff's department that goes into the landfill or the, we'll take our brush. It's a short piece. Those who know Lafayette, Lafayette was split in half in '99. Lafayette goes up into the residential area, is in behind Goodyear, and it does go up to residential area. The other half Lafayette just runs into the landfill, probably 40 yards long, and the only thing that's on it is the sheriff's department. We had a sheriff by the name of Frank Connor, Sheriff F.R. Connors. I would like to consider this name change to Sheriff F.R. Connor's Drive when we bring this up. Sheriff Connors, much like Mr. Penn, spent his whole life in public service, one way or another, whether it's military, was one of the great sheriffs that we had. He was one of the sheriffs that actually took the town of Pulaski, would get out and walk, and just enjoyed the town of Pulaski himself. He spoke very highly of the town of Pulaski. Sheriff Connors died a while back. His son retired deputy. His son is now a deputy with us. I would like the council, when we get to talking about this in a workshop, to consider it as quick as we can. Ms. Connors is not doing very well. If we pass this, it would be a great honor to have her to come down and unveil that new name. The only thing that's on that road is the sheriff's department, and it's, like I said, it is a little part of Lafayette, and I think it'd be very appropriate for a gentleman just like Mr. Penn, spent his whole life in his community, as a board of supervisors, as a sheriff, school, worked school resource officer, and every board he could be on, he served it up until the time that he can no longer walk, to his death. He served this county. So, come the 21st, Ms. Burtman's already directed me what we got to do, and I will bring it up in the work session. You guys, please, go down by the sheriff's department, assist a little stretch of road. It's really nothing on it, runs into landfills, sheriff's departments were, his life was, and I would think that she would make that very great honor to have that happen. Mr. Mayor, to that, then the complete budget, I said it, Ms. Burtman, you've done a wonderful job, as Councilman E. said. It's a very proud budget. You've done a very good job. The whole staff, whole staff.
That did it, Matt.
Done a great job. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a, there's a process that has to go through, correct? Is it, includes a public hearing, and the changing of the, to change the name of a road?
There is a requirement for public input. If the request is generated by the council itself, the process is a little bit different. I gave Mr. Radcliffe a copy of that policy, and I will see that you all have a copy of it before your next meeting. It's really up to the council as to whether or not you want to refer it to another group, such as the Planning Commission. You would definitely do that if you had a request that came from a citizen directly to you all that one, you know, you might not be familiar with, but I'll see that you have that policy. Policy does require, unfortunately, but this gentleman qualifies, that the individual be deceased for at least a year before the naming occurs. But Mr. Radcliffe mentioned this whole situation to me earlier this evening, and I provided him with the information, which is why he has suggested that it be discussed by you all at your next meeting.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Quance?
Not this evening.
Had someone concerned about the grass behind, I know, grass, but at the creek behind Jim Dandy, where she comes in with wreckers and stuff, there could be someone. I don't know if that's our part, if you could just check into it because of the creek. I feel like I'm Jamie today. I don't know what's going on, because they're out next to Walgreens where you turn at the red light, that, it's not, nothing's been done, you know, in the median on Route 11, like right past the hospital before Walgreens. There's, it just looks horrible. Yeah, it hasn't. And then, I don't think the lights are working still on the, on the bridge at the skate park, which I think we need, especially when that starts, if you could. That's my little things, and I'm going to stick to it. With that, we'll move to the manager's report.
All right. Well, I feel like I've done all the talking tonight because of all of the items, but I want to, on behalf of the staff, to thank the council for unanimous approval of the many items that encompass the budget. And I think, as I said earlier, it sets forth a real opportunity for us to continue to grow and develop as a community. I think the investments that we have made and that we will continue to make through the ARPA funds will put us in a very good position for the future. We have, as just today, I believe, authorized the purchase of a charging system that will be installed on First Street, that will, we will be able to accommodate electric vehicles for recharging. It'll be a two-vehicle item. We're paying for it with ARPA funds for the five-year period of the contract, and we find that, as looking at research, that this is another way to bring people into our community to see us for the first time, as well as to benefit citizens who already have made the decision to purchase an electric vehicle. So, we're excited that we're going to be... So we're excited that we're going to be, uh, one of a few municipalities in the area that, uh, is taking that step. And we've made the decision to put it, uh, at the intersection of First and Washington, because that will hopefully encourage people to both visit the downtown, or if they want to take a nice stroll, uh, up the street to the ballpark while their, uh, car is recharging. We think that's a real opportunity as well.
Will we be able to advertise it open eighty-one?
Well, yes, it'll be available to anyone. Uh, we've ordered the system as of today, and Public Works is doing the necessary electrical work in order to connect up. It will have a, um, a cost, uh, involved, which is typical of these charging stations. But, uh, we think that's just another way to get people to see our community for the first time.
And I agree, as having a, an electric vehicle, we, um, when you're traveling, you look for that.
Yes.
And there is very, there's very few through our areas, so with Phil's the closest. And so I think that's a wise thing to do, because it will draw people. I mean, it's.
Just another way that we're looking to see how can we get people to see us for the first time. And speaking of that, uh, we are putting the final finishing touches on the skate park as well as the basketball court. As soon as we have the signage in, and we expect that, uh, very shortly, we will be, uh, having a dedication, uh, ceremony, so that we can actually, uh, open that park, uh, to our local folks. I get, uh, emails or, um, requests on Facebook every day, when is it gonna be open? There's a lot of anticipation building, uh, for that, uh, event. We will still be missing some of the striping on the basketball court for a couple of weeks, but, uh, certainly, uh, people can play on the court and use those new goals, uh, that we have, that we'll be reinstalling. They were taken down, uh, until we could get the fencing in, but the fencing is complete, uh, looks very nice. And we have the, uh, outdoor lighting, uh, there. So I think, uh, that's gonna be another, uh, opportunity for people to visit our community and see what's going on. And then we anticipate in, uh, early August that the mountain bike park, uh, will be under construction. In fact, they've had a, one meeting, uh, to discuss some of that already. Uh, what I wanted to end the meeting with tonight was to highlight what I think is a, kind of a very interesting circumstance. The fire chief has, uh, requested that he have the opportunity to give a comment, commendation to representatives of the police department, uh, at, uh, their annual banquet, which will be held this Friday evening. And I think each of you have received an email from me, uh, making, uh, the invite on their behalf for you to participate. Uh, we had, um, two fires last, uh, last week, uh, almost back to back in two different parts of the community. But the one that I wanted to share with you, uh, this evening, involved an individual calling nine-one-one saying they could not get out of their house. Uh, I happened to be coming, uh, into the parking lot, um, at the time that that call went through, and I saw a police car race out of here, uh, just, my expression was like a bat out of hell. I hate to say it that way, but that's the way it seemed to me. And so I immediately went into, um, the police department, and I said, what's going on? And they told me that they had gotten this call, uh, and that two of our officers, uh, Jamie Brown and Sarah Grimm, had immediately responded. They were actually the first on the scene, uh, immediately followed by several of our firefighters. And, uh, the police officers went in without protective gear, uh, to make sure that the individual within the home was removed. It was a very difficult, uh, move. It actually took several of them, the firefighters, uh, John Hall and, uh, Chris, I'm trying to remember Chris Sherburne, I think is his last name, and our fire chief were involved along with the two, uh, police officers, but the woman was removed successfully. Uh, the police officers did have to go check, be checked out because of possible smoke inhalation, since they didn't have any, uh, protective gear, but they had no thought of that, uh, they just ran into the house. So I thought it was very moving that the fire department would recognize, uh, the importance of that police, uh, response, and how well they work together. And I think that's what, um, is the hallmark of the employees that you have here. Uh, they really are very dedicated, uh, very committed to working, uh, together, and respond beautifully in emergencies as well as in everyday, uh, situations. So, just a little bit of what is done on a day-to-day basis here in your town that you probably never even hear of.
Yeah, I think it is, that is a, that is, that makes a statement about how well our, you know, they're not, they're not in competition. Well, unless they're playing ball or something.
Yes, if, or if we have a blood drive, they're in competition for that, yeah.
Well, that's, yeah, that's awesome.
All right, with that, um, just a reminder of our future council meeting, um, will be June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. Uh, council work session, closed session at five, public session at six-thirty. And as I have nothing else on my agenda, uh, declare this, um, meeting adjourned.